Testing. Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, May 9th. I'd like to welcome everybody to a special meeting of the WRF Citizens Advisory Committee. We are meeting in Morro Bay at the Community Center, 5:00 PM. We have a quorum of five of our six active members present, so I will call this meeting to order. We'll have a quick moment of silence. All right, if we could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any announcements or comments from our WRF CAC members here? Okay, and then, did any of you submit questions on today's meeting agenda or anything besides me? And, staff, do we have a response to those questions in writing, or will that be covered during our meeting?
It'll be covered during the presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that brings us to opening it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Please come up to the podium. State your name if you would, please. It's not necessary, but if you do, we can include it in the official minutes of the meeting. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Larry Truesdale, resident in Morro Bay, and I'm going to try very hard to adhere to the special rules for, the rules for special meetings, and I'm going to talk exclusively about the proving the 12, 17, 18 minutes. Or, there was a joint meeting of, or there was a meeting of the WRF CAC and Planning Commission. How is it that every regularly scheduled WRF CAC meeting between June 2018 and December 2017 was canceled by the city because there was nothing new to report? Was no design work being done by any of the project consultants during this timeframe? Couldn't this six-month period of having nothing to report been used for the purpose in review of various monthly and quarterly reporting options, or update of WRF CAC on the status procurement of financing or development of schedules and financial reporting formats? A review of the concept design report for the WRF conveyance system was presented by Mike Fisher of Waterworks Engineers. Didn't members of the public, as well as the staff, raise questions regarding a major lift station in front of Lemos, which is notoriously known historically for being flooded during heavy rains? What was the outcome of these concerns? Didn't former WRF CAC members, Richard Sadowski, WRF CAC members, Richard Sadowski suggest that the collection system, known to leak for years now, should be repaired before additional flow calculations be developed for a new sewer plant? What was the outcome of those concerns? And didn't WRF CAC members Jesse Barron comment on the city needs to pay more attention to managing the potential traffic disruption caused by installing multiple pipelines along the Main Street and Quintana Corridors? What has been the outcome of these considerations? Didn't Valery Levulet ask about the status of the Bureau of Reclamation Grant and if any communication between the city and the Bureau had taken place? Has the city ever answered these WRF CAC questions? How is it, with so many questions having been asked by the WRF CAC and the public over the past 10 months and beyond, that every regular WRF CAC meeting, except this meeting on 12/17, has been canceled by the city because there is nothing new to report? These are questions by the WRF CAC and have not heard answers by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Heller. I'm here as a resident of Morro Bay, not as a council member. You sign in here. Print.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I have a lot of comments. I thought that, I spent a lot of time reviewing this package, and I thought that each of the four items would be addressed individually, but it sounds like that's not the case. So, I'm going to just kind of go to the ones that I think are most important. And, in looking at the proposed change orders at about, almost $2 million that we're looking at right here, my understanding that these are for the sewer plant portion of the project, these proposed change orders. And it's also my understanding that we had a fixed-price guaranteed, maximum-price guarantee, this is what it's going to cost, agreement with Black and Beach and Phelan to build the sewer plant. So, at the 30% design stage, or at any of the stages, in my opinion, I don't understand why there are proposed change orders, unless they are initiated by the owner, which is common, can happen, obviously, owner will want to make changes. I don't know if these have been initiated by the owner, by the contractor, but I certainly hope that they were not initiated by the contractor. I certainly hope they were not initiated by the owner, because I really would like to know what the owner, why the owner thinks we need to spend $2 million more on the project this early in the design phase, 30% design. It's kind of discouraging, as hard as we work for our money, to think that that money might be given away before, before ground is even broken. That's a concern to me. The other concerns I have, so, as I, and I've been told a couple of times at council meetings over the last few months, that the 30%, this package would include the plant, the sewer plant, and also the piping and pump station piece of it. And looking through this, I think this is just the sewer plant only, am I mistaken? But I think this is the 30% basis of design report for the sewer plant only, am I correct in that? You don't have to answer. Okay, maybe I missed it. Anyway, it's disappointing to me that the 30% package for the pipeline, which has been procured, and in my understanding, based on several recent meetings, has been completed, that it hasn't been brought to WRF CAC. And then the last thing I want to say, really, is that this is a huge package, and I've spent a lot of hours reading just the 43 pages. I mean, I haven't gotten to the attachments. And I think as important as this deliverable is, that the city really owes it to themselves and to the people on WRF CAC who put in so much time on this project, to give a good full two weeks to review this package. This is an enormous amount of information. I've looked at, as I say, the 43-page staff report, and that's it. I haven't even gotten to the plans, and there's just a huge amount of information. And as the city manager and others know, I have lots of comments on how to make the reporting more concise and more digestible by the average resident in Morro Bay, and I'd like to see the, definitely see the reports headed that direction, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. I need a clarifying point. I was planning to open public comment again on item three after we have the presentation and item four. Is that acceptable, or do I have, does everybody have to speak ahead of time? Typically, that's how we do it on most of our advisory. If you have no objection, that's what I'd like to do, because they may have questions, or their questions may be answered in the presentation.
I think that would be fine. Typically, on a special agenda, you would have comments on the item, but I think it makes more sense to wait until after the presentation to take public comments, so we'll leave it to the discretion of the chair to open it back up again.
Okay, so, what I'll do on that is open it back up again for any items for which the public can't stay and wants to make a comment, but please understand, I will open it again. So, is there anybody else that would like to speak now? Please come forward, sign in, if you may, if you can. Welcome, Richard.
Richard Sadowski, citizen in Morro Bay. Change orders, at this point in stage, in this project, is very disturbing. You know, my experience is in the military. I worked on defense projects, and change orders was a way to just siphon more money out for a project. And in fact, certain things, and this project, this whole, this whole process has been a pretty disappointing, at the very least. And what I'm seeing here is, we're just fleecing the city coffers with money and siphoning public funds into the private sector. You know, another example of releasing a document like this intense and then just expecting people to have a chance to process it is pretty disingenuous. I feel that, what I've always felt, when I set on this WRF CAC and when I set on Planning Commission, this project, by its inception doesn't make sense, from a logical standpoint, but now, just, you know, it would be interesting to see how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, John Rickenbach has made, Michael Nunley has made, Mr. Cesares is making, and all these other companies that are just repackaging existing studies. I feel that this is, you know, it's a shame for our city, and especially for the disadvantage in our community.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment at this time? All right, thank you. Close public comment. I can make two comments addressing what was brought up. Number one, I did ask staff to get the agenda out a week ahead of time, and I believe that was at Friday morning, so that we would have time. The agenda was the 43 pages, the other 540 pages were the attachments, a lot of drawings, but that's where some of the justification was. So, typically, sometimes the agendas don't go out till 72 hours, as required by, I guess, public law or whatever, but we had a little more time in the weekend this time, so. Secondarily, on the meetings, the direction I and our group have received from council is that these are no longer regularly scheduled meetings, these are meetings on an ad hoc basis. I've asked everybody on the group here to keep the first Tuesday, 3 o'clock, open, but they are not regularly scheduled meetings, that are, they are canceled. So, just so you know, they are special meetings to review technical matters, for the most part, so. Staff, anything to add on that, on any of the comments?
No, I think you covered it pretty well, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we will go to special agenda item one, approval of minutes from the water reclamation facility Citizen Advisory Committee and Planning Commission meeting, special meeting, I believe that was as well, of July 3, 2018. Any comments from up here? Any mistakes or anything? I didn't catch anything.
I have one.
Go ahead.
For the July 3 meeting, I guess it's page three of our report, under the very first motion, just for the record, I'm not a commissioner, and my last name only has one E.
Okay. Oh, right there, okay. Oh, you're right. Janine, did you catch that? That's right above page three, right above the last motion, so it's just a correction. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 3, 2018, with, as stated, including the update, Paul.
I'll move to approve.
All right. All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
May I ask, who was the second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch who was the second?
I did. Thank you. All right, the next one, item two, is the minutes from the meeting held December 17, 2018. Again, any, that was where we had the EIR presentation, if you remember. Any questions or comments or changes or updates to those minutes from anybody up here? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as stated in Agenda Item Two. I'll make the motion to keep it simple, and...
I'll second.
Jesse is seconding the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right. Item number three is the WRF project update. That's a receive and file. That will be a presentation, I believe, by Eric. So, we will have that presentation, discussion, and then public comment, questions and answers, and then receive and file. I'll turn it over to Eric, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the committee, Eric Caseras, the city's WRF program manager. Thank you for having me here this evening to present on items three and four. The first one being a project update report for the water reclamation facility project, and the second item being a discussion of the basis of design report for the water reclamation facility and a discussion of potential change orders at this time. What we're asking folks here to do tonight is to receive and file the attached March 2019 monthly status report for the water reclamation facility, receive the basis of design report for the water reclamation facility, and then provide any input regarding the potential change orders that will be presented here this evening. We'll start with a discussion of the March monthly status report. So, this was, this monthly status report is actually the quarterly status report on every, at the end of every quarter. The team will be developing a larger quarterly report, which is what you've seen here. I'm going to cover the items from that quarterly report this evening that will show up on a regular basis in the monthly report. A similar presentation has been given to both the CFAC, as well as the City Council, last month, following the completion of the March report. So, the first element of the monthly project report will be a summary of key accomplishments and challenges. So, just a kind of a discussion of some of the key accomplishments that we've had over the previous quarter. We've been working from a general side with the initiation with the SHPO that's necessary to secure any special funding, that we're looking to get any funding from the state and of the federal government. We kicked off the final EIR addendum that's been discussed over the last several months to capture some of the changes that we've had to the project since the City Council certified the final environmental document. We've been advancing the conveyance facilities to a 60% design level, and for the water, excuse me, for the recycled water facilities, we've continued to move forward on the hydrogeological studies with the draft results of the Phase One report that are now available on the city's website, if anybody wants to see those. That report dealt with the fate and transport of nitrates in the basin, as well as the potential for seawater intrusion upon extraction and pumping from the lower Morro groundwater basin, as we're planning to do as part of the WRF project. So, that will be coming back to WRF, WRF CAC and City Council in June. In terms of some challenges that we've had, the, in terms of schedule challenges, we have moved the planned coastal development permit meeting with the Coastal Commission to July. It will be held in San Luis Obispo County, in the city of San Luis Obispo. We've run up against some access issues for the conveyance facilities project, and we've now overcome some of those issues, mainly getting access to the Vistra property and the PG&E property to do the geotechnical and surveying work that we need to do to advance that design process. And then, along the same vein, some access to the Vistra property in order to do some planning for our pilot wells, pilot injection wells we're planning on. In terms of the other item that will be in the monthly report, we have a project dashboard that shows at a high level the overall health of the project currently. A couple of items to note here, the total project cost, it's hard to see on the projector. If you have a handout, it's also in the handout. The target, the target budget, and this was also taken from the staff report, that was, or excuse me, the monthly report that's included in the, in the staff report. The existing budget for the project is about $124.5 million against the baseline budget that was developed with the Blue River Commission last year, was the basis of the rate study of $126 million. And then, there's some other elements here, the budget's been broken down between the different elements of the project. So, the overall general WRF budget, the water reclamation facility itself, the conveyance facilities, the recycled water facilities. We also will be tracking some other items in this dashboard, including the amount of conveyance pipeline that's been installed in terms of linear feet. Obviously, we haven't started construction on that component of the project, so we aren't tracking that yet, but that's something that we intend to track. And then we also are tracking the anticipated compliance date versus the date in the time schedule order where the city needs to comply with the new discharge requirements, and that date is February 23 of 2023. We will be tracking current expenditures against our now revised budget, so if you look under the total project cost column here, you'll see $124.5 million is what we currently plan, currently planning the project cost. Our actual expenditures, the date going back to 2012, is about $8.5 million. Of the $124.5 million, about $75 million of that has been contracted. We've spent about 9.3% of that total contracted amount, and we've spent about 6.8% of the total $124.5 million that we're estimating for completion of the project. This figure here shows the current versus planned expenditures, the cumulative monthly and planned monthly, cumulative expenditures and the planned cumulative monthly expenditures. The line in red shows the baseline that was developed last June for the purposes of the rate study. The blue line shows our revised budget and our revised spend for the program. One thing to note is that the budget for the project, per discussions with council and with CFAC, we'll be doing a quarterly budget update for the project, meaning every month, or excuse me, every quarter, we'll go in and do a detailed look at the budget and revise the budget accordingly. And then on the off months, we'll be just tracking expenditures to that budget. So, this is the first budget update. So, we went from $126 to now $124.5 million is our planned budget. The Gantt chart schedule, so this is the one thing that differs from the schedule that was included in the staff report. This is the new schedule. There's also separate handouts of that that are available. This is, should be easier to, easier to see and is cleaned up from the version that was previously provided. The red line represents where we are in terms of the schedule, and then we have percent completes on each of the schedule items. The bar in teal represents the planned schedule, the bar in darker blue represents where we are in terms of completion. Key construction milestones, that was also something that was very important to folks both on the City Council and at CFAC, and we're tracking the planned construction start dates versus actual. We haven't started construction on any component of the project just yet, so this will get much more interesting as we move into, into construction, and then always keeping an eye on that permit compliance date of February 23, 2023, 28, excuse me. That is the components of the monthly progress report, if you have any questions?
Yes, I think, I'm sure we will. I'll start on my left, Val. Do you have any questions or comments on what's been presented so far?
One thing I wanted to ask you, Eric, is, on your compliance countdown, if you could actually include in parentheses what you said, the month, day, and the year, as opposed to how many days?
That can be included, yes.
And, in regards to construction activities, in Table 8, you have construction activities for the WRF, WRF as slated to begin in August of 2019. However, on page 34 of 43, you say, state that the design team build is planning to deliver 60% design, submit it in August of 2019.
Yeah, that's correct. The water reclamation facility component of the project, the facility itself, is being delivered via the design-build vehicle, so the initial 30% design is what we're going to be discussing here shortly. The next phase in the design process will be the development of a grading package by the design-build team, so they will actually start construction before we have a 60% in a final design.
So, basically, they're going to put pedal to the metal before, in August of 2019?
That's correct.
Okay. There is, even though, this is, even though there are no cultural resources at the WRF project, it would seem to me that you would need to wait till you have SHPO concurrence on the adequacy of the studies.
That is correct.
And, you may not have it by August of 2019.
Our hope is that we have those by that date. We're currently in the middle of the SHPO consultation process. We have some additional architectural and archaeological work that we're doing, not specific to the treatment plant site, but to the other components of the project.
I'll have another comment about that, too.
Okay.
In the BODR, it states that the earthwork will start in, the design focus will start in June of 2019, focusing on the site plan, so I'm assuming that they mean construction in June of 2019. I just think we have some conflicting dates.
Yeah, I believe the BODR dates were developed, and that report was developed, prior to the determination of shifting out the construction date because of the coastal development improvement and other reasons.
So, really, in some ways, it's not the WIFIA funding that's on critical path, it's when you want to start this construction at the WRF.
That's correct, and I would say that the WIFIA critical path is being governed by the SHPO consultation.
Yeah.
So, that's really what's, the critical item that we need to complete is the SHPO consultation in order to finalize the NEPA process and then to be able to sign the loan documents there with WIFIA.
So, this August 2019 date is what you're shooting for?
That's correct.
To start the project, because we can't segment the project, it's all one project.
That's correct.
It's just three components. So, there's a similar kind of question in regards to Table 8, in regards to conveyance. It indicates that July 21, 21, 21, is the construction start date, whereas conveyance construction will begin, as opposed to on page 36 of 43, again, states that construction will begin in spring of 2020. That's minor.
Yep, that's a correction. The planned construction date is spring, summer of 2020 for the conveyance facilities.
Okay. I'll just finish up here on this construction issue, is that... So, you have additional archaeological and architectural work that's currently being planned. When do you anticipate that work will be completed? And, has the city initiated a task order for additional architectural work, since this appears to be an anticipated work? My, I guess my concern is, is when do you anticipate consultation will be completed with the SHPO? The State Office of Historic Preservation regarding the delineation of the APE, Area Potential Effects, Cultural Resource Identification Efforts, Assessment of Effects, and Approval of Mitigation Measures for the Project Impacts. As an interested parties, representatives from the local Native American community are included in those discussions. For this region, Northern Chumash, as well as Salinon, may be included in those discussions, and they are represented by more than one Native American community member. My concern is, is that I feel that it's very important... My concern is, is that I feel that it's very important that the program manager work with Far Western Anthropological Research Group, your cultural resource contractors, to identify what activities are actually required to meet the requirements of SHPO, not just we're going to enter in consultation, but what are what do those activities entail? And how long will it take to complete those activities? And how can they be accomplished within the timeframe for the WIFIA loan, application due date, as well as start of construction? And to me, it just, it's, I think it's important that you have that sit down, and in your mind, you know what the products are, and in their mind, they know what, you know, what what are your critical, what's your critical path, what you're shooting for. And rather than, you know, I just feel like that's a very important thing, exercise for you to do. I know that you work collaboratively and you and have workshops with the with design and everything, but I think because cultural is on the critical path, particularly for this WIFIA loan and for your begin construction, that you have those discussions, because I don't want you to be surprised at the end, because they can be time consuming.
No, absolutely.
I'm just putting that out there.
You know, I appreciate that that feedback, actually. And Phil Kajakowski and I from from Far Western and I talk almost on a daily basis. He was actually, he's been out here on a couple of different properties over the last several days, completing the remainder of the archaeological studies that he needed to do. So those have been, his field work has been completed, and he'll be working on the report that we will be sending on to SHPO to supplement the information that we've already sent them. And then we have the amendment ready to be signed for the additional architectural work that will need to be done by our environmental consultant ESA to support the the APE that we've sent to to SHPO.
The the study that he's going to be completing is basically the identification efforts, and you have another step, and that's your treatment plan, which is basically how you're going to address the project impacts.
Correct.
And that's a, that will probably, it may or not be included when you send that ASR in. It may be a two-step process, it may be a one-step process, if if it can, if it can get get written expeditiously, but it also requires talking to special interests, and that includes representatives from the Chumash and the Northern Salinon.
And and we have initiated, we have initiated those consultations with the Northern Chumash on the city side, and then Far Western is also initiating those those consultation efforts with several other tribes. I believe there are four or five.
Yeah, I just want you to make sure that you understand that there's more than one Northern Chumash group of family, family members that represent this area, and they should all be included. It's not just one.
Anything else, Val?
No, not now.
All right, thank you for your comments. Do we have all that? Okay. Paul, are you ready?
On the, on page eight of our report, which is the cover page of the the monthly report, March 2019, it also says draft April 2019. So if this is supposed to be from March, why are we still calling it a draft? And why are there so many blank pages in the report?
That's because it was, it's meant to be printed double-sided, and so that is one of the comments that we got back from the CFAC and from city council in the subsequent monthly reports, of which we're developing the monthly report right now for for May that will be dated, or excuse me, for April that will be dated in May, is we will have a print version, and we will also have the version that goes into the electronic staff report as well. That'll will eliminate the blank pages.
Okay, turning to page 16 of the staff report. Under accomplishments, it's in the third line here, it says that the city to benefit from its entire allocation of 851 acre feet per year. Where did, where did the 851 amount come from? Where did we get that?
The city has, the city has a permitted, there's permitted allocation to withdraw up to 851 acre feet from the lower Morro groundwater basin. That's what their permit allows.
I looked up the Water Rights Decision 1633, and it's 581.
Oh, I'm, I apologize. It is five, yes, 581. Thank you.
And you answered this other question about looking forward. Under challenges, it talks about the Coastal Commission here and that you're going to meet with them here, I guess, in in July. The application for the, that coastal development permit, is it complete? And and will it be ready for that July date?
Yes, it will be ready for that July date. We've been sending information to the Coastal Commission in order for them to develop their staff report, starting back in January of this year. I have to ask Rob about the official timing for the the application, the application cover sheet.
That will be going into Kevin tomorrow, the signature on the cover sheet. We're waiting for our discussions with the Kaikua Sanitary District to make sure we are both on the same page, but since we jointly own property that will be under this permit regarding the permit application.
Back in 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 March, attached to the city council agenda, March 26th, there was a CDP application, as a link to a CDP application to the, it said submitted to the Coastal Commission in Santa Cruz dated February 14th. What was that? And what became, who was that sent to? It was, it was on the attached to the city council agenda of May 26th, a CDP application dated February 14th this year.
I'll need to take a look at that. I'm not recalling CDP application being attached to the the staff report for city council. I need to take a look at that.
The EIR addendum, which I know you're still working on, won't coastal staff need that as well before they can start their report? Or what's what's the status of the of the ESA, their addendum?
ESA is currently working on that addendum. We will have a revised project description available for internal review on Monday, this coming Monday. We need to complete the architectural work and the archaeological work in order to inform that, and so that will all come together over the next roughly month and a half to complete that EIR addendum.
So Eric, I, I guess you're going to want to push out the 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 date then for the environmental document. You have May 27th as the due date in one of the texts here. So if it's going to be a month and a half, it's going to be sometime in June.
Okay, I can take a look at that.
Yeah, and again, the consultants should all know what they're, what you're shooting for. So that even pushes your your product state even closer.
Just to clarify, Mr. Donnelly, you said the May 26th and the March 26th?
Oh, I'm sorry, March 26th. City Council, Item C1, I believe it was that night, it was a link to a CDP application dated February 14th. Says it was submitted to the Coastal Commission District Office in Santa Cruz. I have a copy that I downloaded from that council agenda. I didn't bring it with me, though. But but kind of following along, kind of like what Val brought up about the construction milestones in Table 8, which is page 24, that August 9th, 2019 date. We've been talking about the Coastal Commission, but are there other entities that need to give permits as well before construction can start, like APCD or Caltrans? Do we need all these things in hand before we can break ground?
For the breaking ground of the the water reclamation facility, we don't need any other permits with the exception of the coastal development permit. We don't need a Caltrans encroachment permits. We will need Caltrans encroachment permits for the pipeline construction, but not for the the water reclamation facility itself.
I seem to recall in the EIR, it mentioned the APCD, and being that that the the Geotech report that was also attached to the EIR identified serpentine rock out there, and there's 107,000 cubic yards of excavation, so APCD is still going to want to chime in on those matters? I believe even your BODR report even mentioned that, too, APCD. In other words, coastal staff and their coastal development will not cover that base. That still has, that's outstanding and required by the County Air Pollution Control District, is it not?
I'll need to, I'll need to look into that, yeah. So just to answer your question about the March 26th, the information provided in the March 26th city council agenda, you're correct. We did, we did attach the information that has been sent to the Coastal Commission in order for them to develop their staff report. That application is not an official application until they receive the signed cover sheet that that Mr. Levick just just referenced. So they've been preparing their the material, but they won't actually start the clock on their application period, and they've got 30 days to develop their staff report once the they get the signed, the actual signed cover sheet.
Robert, can I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you through?
I still have more, but go ahead.
I believe it's in the BODR where I read that there was a discussion of having to make off-ramp improvements at the at the facility location from the highway. So that would be a permit associated with the WRF? Yes or no?
We are looking at some alternatives to avoid needing to do that currently.
Because of what I, what I read in one of these documents now, it sounded like that was something that was going to have to occur.
Yeah, and we're and we're currently looking at ways to to try to, to try to avoid that. That's our goal right now.
All right, thank you.
Getting back to the coastal development permit of February 14th, was that submitted to like EPA or the Water Boards as part of the funding? Did they get a copy of that, too?
No, they they did not receive a copy of that information.
Will they need to see the coastal commission's permit or report or any of that kind of stuff, or the application?
They would, they would probably need to be sent the coastal development permit once we get the actual permit.
Okay, now I'm on page 28. Table 10. You have some dates for the WRF, but right underneath it for conveyance facilities, you have the exact same dates. So it was like it was copy pasted but never edited. For instance, in conveyance facilities, the bid advertisement date was January 31st, 2017. And I think the the bid opening date was May 2017. So the dates in that second line weren't edited, apparently.
You're correct, that's a typo there. Those those dates are correct for the water reclamation facility, the planned dates. I can look up the the current dates for the conveyance facilities that we're talking about.
Okay. And then I know this is kind of in evolving, your your report and how it's going to, you know, have more information, but on page 30, under construction summary, you say during 2019, construction started for one projects. Has work started somewhere, construction? Is that something that you're kind of saying that will happen and when it does?
Yeah, we 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 plan construction to start in 2019 for one of our projects. Correct, correct. One element of the, so of the three project elements, the water reclamation facility will start construction in 2019. The conveyance facilities will start construction in late spring, summer of 2020, and the recycled water facilities will start construction, I believe, in spring of 2021. I just need to take a look at that.
Well, maybe you could just edit it that it will start.
Yep, that will be edited in in subsequent reports.
Then on that same page, it talks about upcoming traffic control. I know you don't have anything right now.
Correct.
But it seems to me that when that, when there is disruptions because of traffic, either at the interchange, that somehow we can get to the public notice, advance notices that these disruptions are are occurring?
Yes.
And I don't know how you want to do that.
Yeah, this is just one mechanism to identify what we anticipate the upcoming, for the upcoming month, the traffic issues will be. Well, we've talked and received input about putting things in the paper, using radio, signage, all those different things are are tools that we'll be using once we start construction on the conveyance facilities.
When they work at South Bay and Highway 1, will you anticipate ramp closures of or detours?
Those are things that we're looking into as we finalize exactly what our plan is for that intersection and the the improvements that are going to need to be made in that area, or potentially how those how those improvements are made.
Okay, under, oh, page 32, talked about public outreach. Just suggest that maybe add WRFCAC to that, as we are kind of the the venue for the public. Just suggestion. On the same page, 6.2, kind of talked about the consultation with SHPO. You made mention it's part of the the NEPA. Normally, I guess that would be National Historic Preservation Act, but I guess the WIFIA EPA needed to complete their NEPA, is that what that's all about?
That's correct. The the SHPO consultation is a key component of the of the EPA being able to complete their NEPA document.
I think Val already alluded to this, but do we need to complete that process before we get a green light on any of the, anywhere on the project to break ground?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, on funding status, about the the Title 16 grant program from the Bureau of Reclamation, how much is the city expecting to get from that grant? How much money?
The the grant amount is up to, I believe, the $30 million is the total that they have approved for those eligible projects. So there's two different categories of projects. There were the the projects that were congressionally identified, and that was, I think, to the tune of 25 million, and then there was the, just a general application that could that could happen, and they just released the FOA for that about a week ago, and I think the total amount was 30 million.
Is it possible that the city can get that entire amount or just a share of it?
Just a share of that amount.
Okay. Table, on page 35, and it's the, I mean, Table 13 on page 35, the WRF construction summary, it does show here the original final completion date being June 2022, but right above it, the notice to proceed for construction says not applicable. I'm just curious, if we use that date and back in how much time? What is the absolute latest date you can start to meet that deadline? Have we already passed that date yet, or?
To meet the June of 2022?
Yeah, because you have underneath that original duration, 1,316 days. That's, if it's calendar days, that's three years, seven months. And if you back that in from June 2022, that makes it December 2018. So are we already slipped, starting too late, or?
In order to meet the 2022 date, I think, I believe the June 2022 date is based on the revised construction start date of August 9th.
Okay.
So the the days, the days could be calculating incorrectly, so I can take a look at that.
So the August 9th, 2019, would be when you issued the notice to proceed for construction to follow? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse, are you ready? Do you have any questions?
I just have a couple of general questions about this part of the presentation.
I just have a couple of general questions about this part of the presentation. First, so the proposed public meetings, I'm under the impression are changed, have changed. We're no longer going to have a standing meeting for WRF-CAC. That's changed, I thought I heard.
That was direction from council months ago.
Okay.
I've heard it referenced on several meetings that we do not have a regularly scheduled standing meeting, but I had asked all the members to hold. Generally speaking, our meetings are the first Tuesday, 3 o'clock. If that's all, this was a special meeting, but that is correct.
Okay, so does the public have a schedule of meetings proposed for the rest of the year?
On an ad hoc basis, and a part of that was done in concert with the transfer of the financial review to CFAC from, from WRF-CAC on the.
Right, I guess I'm just wondering when the public can expect to have an opportunity to review the documents that are being proposed or being disseminated? They are lengthy, and if we could give the public some more time before we have a public meeting after the dissemination of those documents so that they have adequate time to review and adequate time to prepare responses. And I'm wondering if we could get a proposed schedule for the rest of the calendar year at least of meetings at which the public can express their opinions? That's all the comments I have for, for this now.
Thank you. Doug?
I'm interested in this Caltrans encroachment permit. Is that something that's happening now? You're applying, you have applied, or what is the status of that?
We have not yet formally applied for the Caltrans encroachment permit for the conveyance facilities. We're still working on some of the details around that, but we have been discussing with the local Caltrans contact about the encroachment permit. So one of the, one of the items that's, I'd say has changed as of late in the last several months and was talked about at the December meeting of WRF-CAC is the, the change of the alignment. So rather than going through Liva Kaiser Park, the conveyance pipeline alignment now goes in Atascadero Road and then proceeds in the on-ramp within Caltrans right-of-way for a portion before it jogs over and then crosses Little Moro Creek. So that's one of the, one of the, one of the elements that we're currently working on.
Is there any chance that we could use more Caltrans property rather than Quintana as it goes up the hill?
You get much further east-ish and it becomes freeway. There are no encroachments, lateral encroachments based on our permit, our local permits engineer said they would not allow a lateral encroachment into the freeway right-of-way. To explore that, we would elevate that to headquarters, Caltrans. He said he would anticipate two years before we had the answer no.
Even with the new governor, I mean, isn't it possible to at least broach this? Because the whole interruptions on Quintana is certainly an issue.
Yes, it is an issue, but there is a critical timeline for the project also.
There's not enough space between the berm of Quintana and the, it's just a trough right there that goes along the edge of the freeway.
That's in a riparian area. I think that would take, that's not in, within Caltrans's right-of-way. That's private property. But to construct something in that riparian area, I think it would be, this answer would be no, but for different reasons. The, basically the disturbance of that wetlands area.
My other question, of course, is the qualified biological monitor. Eric and I have talked about that. I don't know at what point that person or company begins to do their work.
That would be part of the construction activities.
Is that still potentially Kevin Merck or has someone else been considered for that?
We have not finalized that, that decision. We do not have a contract with.
Okay.
With Mr. Merck to provide those services. He is currently working with the city on some additional biological work that we are doing, again, to support the NEPA process, to support the WIFIA and/or SRF funding.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Barbara, can I ask one more question? Oh, well, you were going to ask.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. Finish my thought. In regards to the design for the project and PSNE and the various phases, at what point do you see all the permits rolling into, 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 into the design? 60, 90, it sounds like the conveyance is, is at 60%. My question, my concern is, is to make sure that there may be some conditions that are developed in the treatment plan that could affect the contractor's work, that would affect the staging and the timing for when, say, the archaeologists got out there and did, did some pre-construction activity and when they would need to be out of the field in order for the contractor to move forward. Other events may involve discoveries during construction, planning for that and having, making sure that they understand that that's going to be built into the conveyance and the IPR specs. And I don't know if, you've had those conversations yet. I don't think they, I don't know how much they have to work with other than the environmental document that was, was fairly general. And oftentimes, when you have something that's that complicated, you actually sit down and work it out and discuss it in detail because the, well, it could be the biologist as well as the archaeologist or whatever. It could be any permit condition could affect their timing and how they're going to program and allocate their time. So.
No, that's, and that's absolutely correct. And that's one of the, one of the reasons why we highlighted some of the challenges that we've had in terms of, in order to progress some of those permitting efforts, we need to complete the survey work and/or some additional biological survey work, so the physical survey and biological survey. And we've just now been starting to get access to some of these sites. In particular, some of those sites are the Vistra and the PG&E property. And so we will be continuing that process. We're already in the middle of that process and will be continuing that once we start to get that information back, specifically the biologic, some additional biological work that we're doing there.
Because some of those, say it's the treatment plan or the biology, there's going to be certain conditions that are going to have to get built into the, into their design plans that have consequences and just so that there are no surprises for them as well. And some of those mitigation measures or monitoring or whatever could affect their cost. It's going to, could affect their time, so it's good if they're coordinated.
Yeah, and that's a good point. And that's one of the things that was done specifically for the water reclamation, the water reclamation facility portion of the project is there was an allowance of a million dollars that was included in the proposals from the design build teams in order to cover some of those mitigations that were unknown. So the design build teams were putting together their proposals even before we had a final environmental document. And we will have things that, there's things that came out of that environmental document, mitigations that they need to adhere to, and there will be other things, there will be conditions in the coastal development permit that may impact. And so that's what that allowance has been identified for.
Just so they're getting ready for it.
Thank you. Okay, so Eric, I have a few questions on table 1 on the WRF performance measurements. I did send those ahead of time.
Yes.
That's on page 18. So before we get into the PCOs, I want to make sure I understand this. What I was basically trying to do was map these amounts back into the rate study that was done last summer on the basis of which was actually 122.8 million plus a 3 million contingency reserve.
Correct.
But those rates that were approved last summer are based on that. So therefore, my question is, the first one is that I don't understand where the 77.1 million, this is in line item 1.1, WRF costs. That's the target, it says, and the current is 77.9 and the status is green. So I thought we discussed at CFAC and I heard at the recent council meeting that green was going to be reserved for anything on budget, under budget, being green. So just FYI, that's why I sent that out. But more importantly, in our rate study last June 2018, I thought it was 74.2 million to include the contingencies and everything else. In fact, it was 62.6 on construction, soft costs of 8.5, reserves of three for a total of 74.2. So how did we get to 77.1? That would be one question.
It's, that's the additional $3 million that we had held. So it's the 122 and change plus the.
Plus the 3.
Yeah, we, when we, and I'm trying to remember exactly, trying to figure out the best way to explain this, but it's the, we had the $126 million budget, which was the 122 and change, and then we had the other 3 million that we weren't going to finance, but we were going to pay that if we needed it with cash on hand.
Okay, okay. So basically what you did is, that would be the cash from the reserves, the water and sewer we had at that time.
Correct. We've been tracking it to the 126. So yeah, the 122 kind of equates to the 126.
It's really 123, write it off. Okay, but I want to understand that. So if you add 3, then you get to 74 point, 77.2?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're definitely yellow there because our target is already 77.9.
It's, the green designates anything within 5% of the budget, either with, up to 5% over the budget.
Okay.
And the problem with that is we had things that were showing at budget or just under budget, and we were showing those as yellow. So that was one of the changes that we had made coming out of the previous city council meeting.
Okay. Well, if that's what it is and that's how it's described, personally, I'd like to see it under budget or at budget. 5% on 126 million is 6 million overage. That means another rate increase, but, but I'll accept your description there, that's fine. Okay, so my next question is the line item 1.4 on the general program cost of 10.2 million with target being 11.47. In that 10.2, is that all the previous program management costs prior to Corolla being brought on board?
That's correct.
Is that where that is?
So anything that was expended prior to us coming on board, which is just over $5 million, is represented as general program costs.
Okay. And back to the question on the 3 million in accumulated cash fund reserve, we had significantly more in that last year. So is any of that already been dumped into any of these, you know, budget numbers or is that just being held? Is that outside the scope of these numbers?
That's outside the scope of these numbers, if I understand.
So we could go back to those numbers if we had to or barring any unfortunate, okay. Let's see what else I have. All right, now we have, and this is why, I know CFAC reviews this, and if you're wondering why is she asking that here? Well, we're also being asked to look at the 1.9 million and change orders. So it's important to understand what this is based on, because if any of these budget numbers change to exceed 126, we're over budget in terms of rates. So my question is, are the 1.9 million change orders approximately that we're going to discuss in a minute, are those already in any of that, those figures for the current? Are they in the 77.9 or whatever that number is?
Yes, the 124 and a half million dollars assumes up to, and if you scroll on down in the staff report, or excuse me, in the monthly report, down to the project detail where there's some additional detail on the water reclamation facility project itself, we, at the time, were carrying, we've moved two and a half, we had moved two and a half million dollars as, as of last month out of our contingency and into the WRF project budget. It turns out that that amount that we're talking about is actually lower, it's closer to $2 million. But that 124.5 million dollars includes a shift of, of 2 and a half million dollars from contingency into the WRF budget.
Okay, and where do I find that contingency on the, the rate study? Is that in the, was that in the soft costs?
I need, I would need to look at the rate study. I don't remember if we specifically identified contingency outside. I think, I think there was a contingency that was.
We discussed it, I remember.
Yeah, I believe if you look at the, looking at the rate study and looking at the breakdown of the 122 or 123 plus 3, that number, that number for contingency is in there, I believe.
Because I think it's important to track that as we are moving, transferring funds from the contingency, where is that in the rate study and where is that in the budget?
The, the table that you just provided me, that table 3, page 7 of Bartowell's report, I believe that contingency is, and as it is currently being shown as well in the project dashboard, it's included as part of the individual, it's been allocated to the individual projects. So we are carrying the contingency as part of the water reclamation facility project, as part of the conveyance facilities, and as part of the recycled water facilities. One of the comments that we did receive both at CFAC, I believe it was at CFAC and council or may have just been council, is we will be tracking contingency. So that's one of the items that we hadn't specifically identified is, you know, we started with a contingency of roughly $9 million. We've now, at tonight, we're asking to, or we're presenting moving $2 million of that contingency out of contingency and into the WRF budget, but we will be tracking that contingency amount, so that's very clear. It is somewhat tracked, it's just a little bit harder to track because we broke it down by project in the project specific.
So the four projects, you have the conveyance, the WRF, the program and the off-site facilities. Each of those has a component of contingency and if you were to break those down, because they're all in the target budget because it adds up to 126.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to, and I saw in your report where you said it was 6.24 contingency, so I'm just trying to track. I couldn't find that anywhere in the Bartles and rate.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are embedded in those, in those numbers.
Okay, so we would expect on CFAC to see a little more breakdown on those four major things.
Not a problem. Yeah, that's one of the things that we will be tracking is we'll be breaking out the contingency and tracking kind of the, the original contingency amount versus what's coming out of that bucket and moving into the other project budget, project buckets.
Okay. And one more question on that. On the tables 13, 15, 17, under budget in, in our report, it says engineer's estimate. So what is that? I couldn't map those easily back to, that's on page.
Yeah, so for those projects that we haven't yet started construction on or that are not design-build projects, so we have a, we have a construction budget for the design-build project because of the nature of that contract, but because we have not completed the design and we haven't bid the conveyance facilities project or the recycled water facilities project, right now those budgets are based on an engineer's estimate. It's not based on actual bid costs or actual contracted cost.
Okay, so, all right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Paul.
Don't worry. One follow-up on the Caltrans thing that Rob mentioned about it, the freeway portion of it. The portion that we're going from Atascadero Road down to some point, isn't that still part of the freeway? Isn't that access control?
We're staying in the ramp, so we are in the shoulder off of the east, southbound, on, onto Highway 1. We don't actually get into the main line until the weave lane really starts, so we dive back over to the bike path before we get into the weave lane there. That's what permits was willing to support.
Do you cross Moro Creek in the state highway right-of-way or do you leave that by that time and cross the creek at the corner of the park?
I believe we're crossing the creek in the state right-of-way.
Right there, as you approach that creek in the state highway right-of-way, there's two very large cypress trees. Are they going to be removed? Right there, between the on-ramp and the fence, there's two very large specimen cypress trees.
I would have to refer back to the design, but likely they may need to be removed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you ready to move on? Is that okay?
Yeah. So next topic, and this one is, is a shorter topic. It's the basis of design report. So I will go over, I wanted to focus a little bit on, not so much the specifics of the basis of design report. As you likely well know, there's a lot of detail in that report for, for a good reason. It's the, the basis of design and really sets the foundation for the remaining design components, the 60 and 90% designs. So I just wanted to kind of go through, this is a progression, a natural progression of the project. The project really started in, in the form that we now see it with the, the master plan that was developed. That master plan concept was then modified and built upon to develop the design-build RFP, or the procurement documents that were used to solicit proposals from the design-build teams. The design-build proposals came back with, with additional design, with additional design clarification or design maturity to a level necessary for those design-build teams to come up with a guaranteed maximum price. And so the next step of that is really this basis of design report and the 30% design. So the 30% design really consists of this basis of design report, plus the appendix that was provided with the, the preliminary drawings there, the 30% level drawings. So then there's another couple steps that we're going to go through in order, before we have a complete design for the water reclamation facility. And since this is a design-build project, and Valerie had alluded to this, is we are going to go through and develop a grading package, and then we're going to start construction. Conventional design-bid-build project, there would be no grading package. We'd go right from the 30 to the 60 to the 90 to 100% level of drawings, and then we would start construction. So we have enough information to be able to develop a grading package that will allow us to start construction. And during the time when the design-build team is out there and doing a lot of the rough excavation, we'll be further refining the design in the 60 and 90, and then starting with the, the construction of the actual facilities. I wanted to stress that this has really been a collaborative work product. And so starting with the notice to proceed that was issued to the Philance Black and Beach team in November 1st, we've held a, a number of workshops, six in total, actually just coming off of our seventh that we finished yesterday. And most of these are all-day workshops discussing any number of topics from the design schedule to the permitting requirements to some very specific elements of the, the process design. So we had a number, a couple of workshops on November 28th, 29th, December 19th of last year, and the 20th, January 10th, March 12th, and then March 28th, before really delivering the basis of design report and what we're bringing to you today and what you've seen in the packet. So again, what's the purpose of this basis of design report and 30% design? It's really to define the project's scope. With the exception of the proposal, this is the first deliverable that we've gotten from the design-build team. The goal of this basis of design report and 30% design is to ferret out as many of the changes as possible that we are going to see through the construction process. So in difference between this design-build process and maybe a conventional design-bid-build process where we're talking about change orders, we're really trying to, to identify any of those changes as we, as, as much as we can before we start construction in these early, in these early phases. We're focusing on the site plan refinement. That's been a huge focus. That allows the team to come up with this grading package and to start early construction and start with, with the earthwork. The other piece that we're looking at is, is really setting the stage for early procurement of critical pieces of equipment. So a number of pieces of equipment that we're considering have significantly long lead times. And, and so we're starting that, that competitive procurement process now. And, and really the basis of design identifies the design criteria for that equipment that we are going to be procuring in the next several months. And then in general, it supports early start of construction. It's a little bit difficult to see, maybe a little bit easier to see in the, in, in the package that was provided. This is the revised site plan. The proposal information was previously provided to WRF CAC and is made available, as you can see, some of the refinements to the site plan that have been done since the, since the proposals were received. With that, I'll entertain any questions. Again, I kept the, the, pretty high level here on the basis of design, but, but wanted to give you guys the opportunity to ask any questions.
Will the revised site plan be included in the coastal development permit package? Because what they saw previously is different what they're going to see now.
Absolutely. So the coastal, we've been working, like I said, as I mentioned, as anything has changed on the project over the last several months, we've been working with the Coastal Commission to make sure that they have the absolute most up-to-date information, and they do have the final site plan from the 30% design.
Is it, is it available anywhere legibly?
Absolutely. That's, it's hard copy. Electronic copy, you should have no problem being able to see that. It's on 11 by 17.
Okay. And that's available where?
That's, that is available on the city's website as an attachment to the WRF CAC staff report.
Anything else here, guys?
Yeah, real quick. On page 43 of our staff report, which is this item, at the very top paragraph, you abbreviate the basis of design report as BDR. And then in the paragraph right underneath the table of workshops, you have BODR, BODR. Which, which should we be using?
Well, that's a good question. It, it, it's BDR. I think, I think I have a little bit of a difference of opinion, maybe with our friends from the Black and Beach team in terms of how we, how we, what acronym we use for basis of design report, but I'm getting over that because they use BDR and we will be using BDR. BODR is a holdover from my own, my own design work.
All right. In that table of workshops that occurred, did somebody take meeting minutes and notes to kind of document what was done at these workshops? Is that available somewhere?
We have, we have decision logs, action item logs, and meeting minutes from a number of these workshops, yes.
And is that available?
Those are not, those are not available on the city's website. Those are internal to the city's website, on the city's SharePoint site.
One of the things that you had on that site plan up there, the best I could tell from looking at those plans you suggested, which are real hard to look at on the screen, zoom in and zoom out, there's 108 pages sheets. But I seem to recall, or maybe it was mentioned in the, the basis of design report about not fencing the entire parcel, just fencing the, the treatment plant. Why do we need all that land if we're just going to leave it as it is? Why do we only fence the treatment plant and have the rest of that parcel as it is right now? Why do we even need to purchase that?
The parcel purchased was based on discussions with the property owner. They didn't want to carve out a lollipop of a treatment plant site. They wanted to sell the corner, basically, to us. So it was through the process of negotiations and the MOU that we came up with the area of purchase.
What are we going to do, what are we going to do with that excess parcel of land?
Likely will remain as is. As agricultural, there'll be a small portion of it that may have solar on there. It's through a purchase, power purchase agreement. But for the most part, it's going to remain as is, probably with a covenant over it for agricultural, mainly to likely deal with the ag offset due to construction on ag land.
The, the solar array that you were talking about, wasn't there some objection from the neighboring landowner about having all that out there with his cattle grazing? I think Mr. Minow rejected that idea at one time.
I believe he commented on that, and it was addressed in the EIR. And we'll make that decision, the council will make that decision in the future, whether they want to actually install the, whether it benefits the city or not.
Is that considered part of the project description that we're talking right now, is having that?
It's not currently part of the, the, the project as the, the budget, the 126 million dollar budget, it's not included in that. As, as Mr. Lively mentioned, it would likely be procured via a power purchase agreement. But the solar is included in the, the environmental document, in the EIR.
And getting back to what you were saying about you're going to start grading, I guess, soon, or as soon as you can, will that be pushing it into the rainy season as you get all that started? That would, is that what I'm seeing? Is that what we'll be?
Yeah, the hope was to start construction earlier in 2019 to be able to avoid some of those issues with weather. But that is, that is something that the, we will be dealing with, with the, the change in the construction schedule.
I don't know if you recall, when they constructed Dairy Creek Golf Course, they, they did the whole 18 holes at one time. When winter hit, it was a mess. Dairy Creek looked like chocolate soup. The regional board was all over the county for what they had done. They kept putting up more and more silt fences chasing their tail. And I see the same thing occurring here. So I caution you about what you do as far as erosion control, because you're so close to the estuary at this point. You'll go right into it and the regional board will be out there for sure. You can't hide it.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else?
I have a few questions. The, can you elaborate a little bit on the clearly defining of the revised project's scope? How has this scope been revised?
The, essentially, the revisions are reflected in the, in the PCOS. And so the, the guaranteed maximum price that was provided by each of the folks, each of the teams that proposed on the design-build project was tied very closely to a, a scope of work. And that scope of work is embodied by, in the design-build agreement that we have with Black and Beach. We refer to that as Exhibit B, which is, which is the, essentially, all the technical information from their proposal, in terms of the facilities that would be constructed, the size of those facilities, the, the design criteria that was used to size and cost those facilities and, and those items. So any change in scope is really as a result of, of either changes that don't trigger, a quote-unquote, trigger a, a, a material change in scope, or ones that trigger a material change in scope and then manifest themselves as potential change orders. And then once they're executed as change orders, become part of the new scope. And so that's what we're going to be getting into here in a second.
Okay. And I'll, I'll wait for the presentation to make my last comment on the change orders. But when we get to the 30% design, when we get to a point where we have printable sets of plans, would it be possible to get some, maybe laminated plans for public review at City Hall?
I think we could make some hard copies available of some of the, some of the design deliverables. Understanding, yeah, they're, they're pretty large documents. They can, they can be a little intimidating and not always the easiest thing to look at electronically.
Absolutely, which is why I was proposing maybe hard copies at the, at City Hall for public review. I think the public has an interest in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, anything? Okay, I think we'll proceed with the rest of the presentation, then we'll go to public comment discussion. So this would be on the potential change orders.
Correct. So, thank you. The third part of the discussion is focused on the potential change orders. And, and as Mr. Barron mentioned, really what, what defines the, we had one scope of work, the original scope of work, that's the scope of work that's currently in the Philance Black and Beach contract, has a associated roughly $67 million price tag associated with it. We've identified a number of changes. There are currently 38 different changes that we are in various stages of, we've considered them. A lot of them have, have now made it to the cutting room floor and are not being brought forward. We're going to be talking about really the, the bulk of them today, the 17 that we've gone through and vetted. But that's what's going to distinguish, and eventually, when, when and if City Council accepts these change orders, those will become part of the, the amended contract with, with the DB team. So that's how the changes, changes to the contract will, will concur through this potential change order process. So what is a PCO? It's a potential change order, but how do they arise? Really, the first step is someone suggests a change to the water reclamation facility scope as it's been identified. And to answer a question that was brought up during public comment, for the most part, these changes were brought up either by the city or the program team for one reason or another. And we'll get through the, we'll go through the rationale of several of the largest change, potential change orders as we move through this tonight. So someone says, we want to change something that's currently in the, the DB scope for one reason or another. We look at that change, and we meet with the DB team, and we discuss, and we say, we would like to change, and we would like to add a pump to this certain process. And we make the determination in discussions with the DB team, is that a material change in the DB scope? And if we determine that's a material change in the DB scope, then the design-build team goes back and they develop what we refer to as a ROM or a raw order-of-magnitude cost estimate for that change. So if the change is identified and we say, okay, well, that looks like something that we want to do, we then get the ROM from the DB team, and we look at that ROM, and we say, is it worth, is this change absolutely necessary? If it's not absolutely necessary, is it worth the, the cost that we're getting from the DB team for that change? If we, we, we meet together, the city and the program team, and we discuss, is, does it make sense for us to move forward with, with this change? If we decide to move forward with this change, then we let the DB team know, and they develop their draft PCO. As you all may have seen in the attachment to the staff report, there was the PCO detail in there for the 17 potential change orders that we're bringing forward here tonight. There's a lot of detail that's presented in those detailed cost estimates, detailed drawing showing the changes to, to the design. So that draft PCO is developed. And then we take those draft PCOs, and we have our cost estimators on, on the program team side and the city side. We review those draft PCOs. And we come up with changes to those PCOs, or disagreements on the way that the costs were determined, or the costs that were used to, to develop those. We meet as a group to discuss those comments, or we have a conference call to discuss those comments on a particular PCO. And then the DB team develops the final PCO, and we go through a negotiation, the negotiation process there. Which is essentially where we've brought all of the PCOs that we're bringing forward here to WRF CAC tonight, have all gone through this process. As I mentioned, we're going to focus on 17 of those PCOs here tonight. Up to 38 of them have been considered, and the vast majority of those are wrapped in, wrapped up in these 17 PCOs. Many of these other PCOs that I'm, that we've discussed are either non-cost PCOs, so what we thought was going to be a material change that ended up not becoming a material change, that we accepted, that was a no cost, no cost impact, or ones that, upon seeing the raw order-of-magnitude cost, we decided not to move forward with those. So summary of the proposed PCOs, really, this stage right now in the 30% design in this initial round of PCOs, it's really meant to reconcile the DB team's interpretation of the RFP and what they developed in their proposal with ultimately what the city's needs are. So I will say that, that no RFP is perfect. And so the DB teams did their best in interpreting that RFP and developing a proposal on a project that they thought that the city, the city needed. And so this is a natural process. We obviously anticipated this process because we had a, a contingency that we had identified for this component of the project. As I mentioned, there's a total of 17 PCOs that were currently being considered with a total impact of about, total cost impact of about 1.9 million. That breaks down roughly through this process. We've not only been looking at things to add to the project, obviously, we've been looking at things to change or delete from the project as best we can. So really, we're looking at a total cost increase of 2.2 million, but we are also looking at a total decrease in costs of about 350,000. So the net is the 1.9. As, as Chair Spagnola mentioned earlier, the planned contingency for the WRF component of the project is 6.2 million. the planned contingency for the WRF component of the project is 6.2 million. If you take out the 1.9 million that we're discussing here tonight, it leaves us with a contingency of 4.4 million for the water reclamation facility on its own. We're still carrying contingency for the other components of the project, conveyance facilities component as well as the recycle water facilities component. What this all means is that the PCOs do not result in an increase in the total project budget. As was mentioned, everything that we're talking about here tonight is part and parcel to the 124.5 million dollar revised budget that we presented earlier. This is a breakdown of the 2.2 million dollar cost increase. So for the sake of discussion, we've gone ahead and taken the roughly half dozen PCOs that are cost deducts and we've taken those and moved those aside. And we're just looking at the roughly 2.2 million dollars in cost increase and how those break down between the individual PCOs. In terms of the rationale or the justification for the cost increase in these PCOs, they roughly fit into a couple of different categories and we can get into more detail as we discuss some of the larger ones. But they really fit into operational, operational considerations. So one is operational safety, one is improved operations, and the other is long-term O&amp;M cost savings. So looking at ways to maybe increase the construction cost a bit, but to be able to save cost in the long term and the life of the facility. So going back to these roughly, roughly dozen increased, or the, kind of the plus cost PCOs, I wanted to focus for the sake of time on four of the largest PCOs that make up roughly 80% of the total cost increase of the 2.2. That's PCO 17, excuse me, 9, 17, 21, and 22. So starting off with PCO number nine, this is the consolidation of the chemical facilities. The RFP did not specifically identify the need to consolidate the chemicals into one location. So upon receipt of the proposal from the design-build team and looking at, at what was included, there was a desire from the city side and operation staff to be able to consolidate those chemicals, one, to improve the ability for chemical deliveries and to improve operator safety. So the chemicals were located in three different locations. There's a centralized chemical facility and then we had chemicals located in a couple of different locations. You can see there in green. Those three locations are the ROUV building, the MBR building, and again, the chemical storage area. So this site plan that's shown here is what was included in the design-build team's proposal. This revised site plan you saw earlier, which is the site plan in the 30% design. And as you'll notice, there at the lower part of the site, the easterly part of the site, kind of in the middle, is the centralized chemical facility. So what we've done is we've taken the chemicals that were located at the, the MBR. So we have both sodium hypochlorite as well as citric acid there for cleaning of the membranes. And we've relocated that to consolidated chemical facility area. We also have acid that was once up at the ROUV building that we need for pH control. And we've moved that down into the consolidated chemical facilities as well. The result from this is we've actually increased the size of the consolidated chemical facility. So the facility on the left is a rendering that was from the proposal package that was developed by the Philance Black and Beach team. And on the right is a rendering of the new chemical facility, consolidated chemical facility area that's included in the 30% design. The overall cost impact of this PCO is about 220 million dollars. Really, the cost increase and the detailed costs are included in the PCO detail really come from the increased storage area size and the chemical duct banks and piping that are needed to make that happen.
220,000.
220,000, I'm sorry. I was wondering why you were looking at it like that. Again, the rationale is improved operator safety and best manager practices for self-insured. This is something that Mr. Mueller has to deal with at the existing facility with the insurance company of having chemicals scattered out throughout the, the existing treatment plant. So that's really the rationale for this, this proposed change order. The next is the PCO 17, which is a safe equalization system. And we've talked about this at previous meetings. One of the cost-saving mechanisms that was, that was proposed by the design-build team and has now become part of the project is an auxiliary stormwater treatment facility to more efficiently and cost-effectively treat high wet weather flows that are coming into the facility. And what we're proposing here with this, with this additional facility is we've added an equalization tank ahead of that filtration system for the stormwater. It's, again, it's difficult to see on this projector, but we've added a roughly 100,000 gallon concrete structure that will be used to equalize flows that would have gone straight through the stormwater, the auxiliary stormwater or the safe system. And, and this, what this does is it reduces the, the frequency at which that system needs to operate, reducing the maintenance required for that mechanical component. So again, the cost impact of this PCO is roughly 500,000. It's wrapped up in essentially the concrete tankage itself as well as the process piping needed to, to make it part of the facility. Really, the rationale is we will see improved process performance with this. Because of the, because of the equalization, we will get solid settling out in that basin that will not be going through the filtration system. It provides the operations with a lot of flexibility in terms of when there are small storm events, it will not necessarily need to activate the auxiliary stormwater system. It again, will reduce maintenance for the safe filters because they will operate less frequently and it will just improve the robustness of the system and provide more reliable permit compliance. Number three is the PCO number 21, which is the revised maintenance building. So there was very little detail that was provided in the RFP for the necessary size of the maintenance building. And so what was included on, in the proposal is what we have on the left side here, which is the, the maintenance building of roughly 3,600 square feet. The facility on the right is what's shown in the 30% design drawings and is described in the basis of design report, which is about 5,600, or excuse me, 5,400 square feet in total or about 4,000 square feet of, of maintenance area. And the reason why I specifically identified that 4,000 square feet is to, is to compare it to what the city currently has in terms of existing maintenance space. So that area up towards the top of the maintenance building is not really, those are some other administrative facilities and the maintenance space itself is about 4,000 square feet. Here, we've shown on the left is the, the master plan, which had a description of the maintenance needs for the city as well as a master plan that was done for the facilities back in 2008 that went through all the vast, various cities' facilities and identified the maintenance needs. So on the right-hand side, the city's existing maintenance spaces are summarized here. There's about 2,300 square feet the city currently uses at the wastewater treatment plant for maintenance. Obviously, with the, with the decommissioning and the eventual demolition of the existing facility, that will go away. There's also 700 square feet that is dedicated to water that as a result of the construction of the large pump station down by the courtyard, that, that area will go to consolidated maintenance. So that area will no longer be available for Mr. Mueller and the water and sewer departments to be able to use. Collections also has about 1,600 square feet that's located on the existing wastewater treatment plant that will again be demolished. And there's another 400 square feet facility space that is well as being, that is currently being used for maintenance that will also be demolished. So if you look at all those things in total, the city uses, or excuse me, the water and sewer department are losing about 5,000 square feet of overall maintenance space. And as you'll remember previously from this side, we've, we've been able to translate that into about 4,000 square foot of, of maintenance space need. So while we're increasing from what was included in the proposal, we're actually decreasing what, for the space the city currently uses. And essentially, the city's current maintenance workload is not, is not necessarily going to change and will actually be higher with a more complex facility. So that's the, really the rationale for this change. Again, net reduction in the maintenance space due to efficient, and the net reduction is really gained, is really due to the efficiencies of moving all of these into one consolidated space. So as mentioned, right now, there's about four different areas that comprise 5,000 square feet that's used. Bringing that all together, it's a little bit more efficient and we're proposing 4,000 square feet for the new, the new maintenance building. The cost impact of this change is about 750,000. Really, it just, it's due to the, the increase in the building footprint, going from roughly 3,600 to 5,400 square feet. Again, the rationale is improved operations. Really, it's in line with the existing maintenance space, the 4,000 versus the 5,000 square feet. And again, it's in line with the 2008 facility master plan as well as, or excuse me, the, yeah, the 2008 facility master plan. And that's not the facility master plan that we're talking about that was recently done by Black and Beach. This is one that was done by an architect back in 2008 looking at all of the city's facilities and what the needs were for the facility for maintenance. The final PCO that we're going to go to in a little bit more detail here is PCO number 22, which is a change in the influent piping and metering. Essentially, what we're doing here is there's a green line that's shown at the bottom of the site plan. That green line represents the pipelines that will be coming onto the project site and bringing the raw wastewater up to the headworks, which is located at the northeastern end of the facility. This PCO includes removal of the 18-inch raw wastewater force main that was currently, that was planned and that was costed by the DB team in their proposal and replacing it with two, two pipelines, one that's 12 inches and one that's 16 inches. We're also, since we're adding a second pipeline, we need an additional flow meter. That's depicted in the upper right-hand corner of the picture, an additional flow meter. Total cost, cost impact about 400,000. Really, it's just due to additional piping. I want to, I want to go into this one a little bit more because this is really building on previous determinations that were made at various other points in, in time for this project. So the Blue Ribbon Commission, back when, when they developed the, the overall 126 million dollar budget for the project, one of the things that was happening during, when that budget was being put together is that the conveyance facility project was being, the design was being progressed. One of the things that was identified by that DB team is the problems associated with using a single pipeline to be able to move raw sewage from the existing treatment plant to the new wastewater facility. And so operationally, it became absolutely necessary to have two different pipelines, a smaller pipeline that's used during, during dry weather and a larger pipeline that's used in tandem with the smaller pipeline during wet weather. This also provides some additional redundancy for the system if you were to have some issue with one of the pipelines. And so for those reasons, we ended up including the additional cost of the conveyance portion of this in the, in the cost estimate for the Blue Ribbon Commission. This is something that we have discussed at several different times throughout the project, specifically when WRF CAC was presented, the 30% design for the conveyance facilities. We talked at length about the redundancy and the need for two different force mains. And then when we also brought similar information to council in January, we also talked about the need for the redundant force mains. Essentially, what we're doing is this lets us continue those redundant force mains all the way up to the headworks. So you may ask the question, "Well, why didn't the design-build team anticipate this change?" It really is a timing issue. This, this issue and this solution was identified after the design-build teams had already completed their proposals. So it was very clear in the RFP that they were to assume one pipeline of, of an 18-inch diameter. And, and so this, this PCO is a result of the change. This is just a kind of a domino effect of the change that we'd already made in the pipes running through the, running as part of the, the conveyance facilities project. Again, improved operability is the reason for, for this change. Again, thank you for allowing me to present these three different topics. Again, we're asking, and thank you for your questions regarding the March 29 monthly status report and on the basis of the design report. And I look forward to getting your input regarding the potential change orders. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Eric. I'll start just real quick on the PCO, one on the revised maintenance building. If you're reducing the footprint significantly and for this 750,000 PCO, what are the long-term cost reductions as a result of reducing that facility and the overhead and the maintenance utilities? Has anybody looked at that?
We have not looked at the additional efficiencies that would be gained. Really, I think it was, it's really an exercise in looking at, could we do the amount of maintenance that we need to do now in a building of 3,600 square feet, of which not all of that 3,600 square feet is really maintenance space? So it really just wasn't adequate to, to be able to perform the functions that, that utilities currently performs.
What was the initial cost of the maintenance building, proposed to be?
I will look that up here if you just give me one second. If you have another question, we can go on and I can, I can kind of do double duty here.
Since we're on that one, the PCO 21, it seems like it's an awful lot for a small additional square footage because you say, "The cost is based upon increased building footprint, so per square foot, that's exorbitant." I mean, it doesn't seem to, I can't see how you can justify 748,000 for a few extra square feet of building.
That's what I was going to say too, because I mean, a 50% increase in square footage. I mean, if this isn't, if this is 50% of the cost of the initial building, so if the initial building was 1.5, 1.6 million and we're increasing that by 748,000, maybe we need to take a closer look at how that all panned out.
Yeah, the, and we've taken a close look in the, in the detailed cost estimate that was provided. So what you're looking at is what our team looked at and we made changes to the draft's PCO. And we looked at that square footage, that cost per square foot. One of the interesting things about this building and the size and length of it and how it lays out on the site is we do have to do some retaining walls and some different things. And it's multi-level to be able to work on the site topography. So that goes into why the cost per square foot is, is higher than you might expect.
And that's the ideal spot? I mean, if there's not a more ideal spot that doesn't require retaining walls and things like?
That's the ideal spot based on the site layout that we have, yeah.
Eric, did the original estimates include all of the maintenance activities that you currently are going to be engaging in at this, this location? Does this, and the current costs, does they better reflect those activities?
Want to make sure I, I understand your question. I will say that the, the RFP was noticeably light on detail there.
I guess that's what I meant. So as you fleshed it out and what's being transferred over and what, what the needs are, so.
I would say that the, in looking at this from, from my opinion and from the, going along with the, kind of the DB's interpretation of the RFP, I would say that that maintenance building might be adequate to just service the treatment plant. But knowing, but understanding that there's areas on the existing wastewater treatment plant site that are used for not just maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, but they're also used for the maintenance for the water and sewer, sewer departments. And so with those going away, we're really asking this maintenance facility to do a lot more work than just service of the wastewater treatment plant. So if you looked at it, and I would say, it would probably be just about adequate to be able to handle a wastewater treatment plant of about 1 MGD. But the fact is that that's not what the maintenance building is doing. It's actually doing quite a bit, quite a bit more work than that.
Just want to add in, over the past couple of years, we've really changed the organization of the utilities department. No longer are we single-purpose operators. We're multi-cert operators. The operation staff does kind of double and triple duty or has the ability to do that. And hopefully, that will, as we've seen it already happen, turn into longer-term cost savings due to lower personnel costs.
Yes, that was discussed a lot on the Blue Ribbon and we appreciate that, what Mr. Mueller has done. I think in terms of less turnover and more skilled, that's good. So I have, you're asking us to approve all these change orders en masse, right, basically?
I don't think that that's necessarily true.
I think we're asking for your comments and input on the change orders. The City Council will be asked to approve the change orders.
Fair enough. So if you review the detail that was in the attachment, on, I noticed on all the change orders that are increases in cost, there's appropriate burden placed on there, 12% engineering. orders that are increases in cost, there's appropriate burden placed on there, 12% engineering, some GNA admin, and then 5% on some of the others, the contingency. And that totaled about 29%, which is significant on some of these larger ones, obviously, and I understand that, if you're doing more work and there should be some engineering. So, my question is, on all the ones, with the exception of one, that had a cost decrease, those percents were not backed out. It was just, you know, the labor and that. So, and that equated to about $60,000. So, my question for you to take back in your negotiations is, why is it that we have to add 29% when we're doing more, but we don't get to subtract that? Because some of the changes you're adding result in a decrease or something else that doesn't need to get done. So, it would appear to me that that would be, that should be something that should be discussed and negotiated.
Sure. And a number of the credit change orders are not necessarily just a complete deletion, but it's a change of what we're doing. So, one really good example of that would be PCO, I'll draw you, this is probably the easiest one to explain that concept, would be PCO, oh geez. PCO number 23. So, PCO number 23 represents a cost savings of approximately $60,000. So, there was a specific technology that was requested in the RFP for the blowers. So, they're really the workhorse of the heart of the treatment plant. And so, we took a look at that and in talking with, talking with the program team and talking with the city, we identified a least costly technology for those blowers. And we said, what if we switched from a high-speed turbo blower to a least costly positive displacement blower? And we looked at the long-term O&amp;M costs associated with those, and we said, you know, it really makes sense for us to take advantage of the construction cost savings. So, really, that doesn't change the engineering work that the design-build team has to do. They just are changing their focus. They're no longer putting in all the detailed design into one black box, they're putting it into another. And so, that's kind of an example of why necessarily those aren't the same.
Okay, thank you. And then, also, I think I saw on one of the presentations to council that the 30% was more a schematic when it was 30, 60, 90%. And yet, we have, you know, a significant number of change orders here. So, my question to you would be, how many more of these change orders are coming? That's my concern, because we have 6.2 million in contingency, we haven't done anything yet, we have permits consolidated, et cetera, et cetera. And 30% of the 6.2 million, it was pointed out to me, is pretty close to the 1.89 that we have here. I'm assuming that's purely coincidental, but logically, okay, that's the same, but can you answer why? How many more are coming?
Yeah, with, this is really the lion's share of the change orders that we anticipate.
For the whole construction?
For the whole construction. This is really with the design-build process, again, one of the benefits of the design-build process is really driving to better cost definition earlier on in the process. And so, whereas change orders, as we commonly refer to them, are really issues with the design and disputes between the design and contractor during the construction process, the design and contractor in a design-build process are one and the same, so you don't have those disputes. So, really, the change orders that we're going to be dealing with for this project are really the initial project definition. And again, this is really the big share of the change orders that we anticipate at this time. And we say 30% design is, it is a, this is more of a, than a conceptual level design, especially with the way that the design-build process is. Again, the design-build team took this to a level of completion when they developed their proposal, to be able to cost the facility and sign up for the cost that it was going to take to build this. And then, this is just a further refinement of that. So, we've really been able to ferret out the major changes that we've seen.
So, further refinement, not tripling of more change orders coming down.
Absolutely.
Is this typical, you've managed some large projects, infrastructure in your career, is this typical what you would expect to see before you even have started any construction at all?
For a design, for a design-build project? Yeah. I mean, again, it depends on the design-build project, and it goes back to the level of definition that was provided in the RFP. It goes to the specific nature of the way that the design-build contract is being structured and everything else. But based on, based on the way that this project was structured, the level of definition provided in the RFP, this is in line with what I would expect.
Okay, thank you. Can I open up for public comment? If there's any public comment out there, we, based on presentation and discussion, we're interested in hearing what you have to say. If anybody would like to speak, please come up to the podium. And if you wouldn't mind signing in, you don't have to, but if you do, we can include your name in the...
I'd be happy to. Carolyn Brinkman, Mar-a-Lago resident. And I just have some questions, and if they were covered, pardon me. On page two of this, I did not read the, I didn't read the report. So, page two, key accomplishments and changes. You mentioned that the draft results of Phase I hydrogeological study, that that was available. I looked on the website. I'm wondering if I just didn't have the title and the date right? So, if you could tell me that. Also, is there a copy of the FEIR addendum? Is that on the website also? And if so, what would be, would it be under that title? And then, on page 17... This is the revised maintenance building, and I know there's been a lot of concern about what actually goes into that facility. And so, were any functions added, any offices added, any spaces for people added? I know people are really interested in that. And then, on the next page, 18, influent piping, metering. Is this stormwater coming from, is it influent into the original pipes? Is that the problem? And I just answered that because I know people are very concerned about those pipes not being fixed, and a lot of stormwater getting into the pipes and increasing the flow. And so, is that to accommodate that extra additional piping to accommodate that? Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other public comment? Welcome.
Thank you, Kathy Quigley. I'm just trying to follow some things. So, earlier in the discussion, I think during the March monthly report, on, I think we were looking at the project dashboard, there was discussion, and I think Chairperson Spagnola asked about, had any of the contingency money been shifted already? And I believe somewhere around 2 million. Is that in addition? So, will the 1.8 change orders be in addition to the 2 million you were discussing? That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? We'll get to that.
Lynda Donnelly. So, these two million dollars in change orders, before we have a shovel in the ground, before we own the property, et cetera. Is that just for design? Because let's put on our seatbelts when construction starts, right?
Please just make your comments.
No, yes?
No, please just make your comments and your questions.
Oh, you don't answer?
And then, this is not interactive, and then we will attempt to address all the questions, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to know that one.
Fair enough. So, any other public comment? All right.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, this is a thank you. I really appreciate your questions. I think the community would be very pleased, if they're watching, to know that you have really read that report and asked critical questions. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, that's our job. Okay, Kathy, on one of your questions, I did ask early, and the change order cost, the 1.9 million, is included in the table one with the WRF performance in the budget and in the estimated budget, so that should take care of that. Robert, go ahead.
May we come back to one thing?
Yeah.
Scott, Eric, you were going to look at the cost of that maintenance building. Did you find that yet?
My computer's giving me a little problem here, so...
I would, I mean, I think that's probably the big-ticket item on here, that the equalization tank, to me, was something that I think that should have been anticipated, but I mean, if it's a performance increased or decreases the cost of maintenance over the lifespan of the facility, I guess that's an understandable thing. I think, if I have a comment to make, it's going to be, you know, we have a glut of information, you know, produced on Friday, and we have a meeting on Thursday. So, this wasn't enough time to absorb this type of, this type of report in a meaningful way. So, I don't know that I can meaningfully recommend anything to the city council, because I don't have enough information to make educated decisions yet. So, and I mean, obviously, they're going to make, the city council is going to make the final approval. However, I hope they're looking to our opinions and our comments as meaningful, and I just don't have enough, I haven't had enough time to take this information in and make meaningful decisions, so...
Fair enough, thank you. We had a couple of questions at public comment. Eric, can you address a couple of those?
Yes, I am, the hydrogeology study is on the website, and we can provide where exactly that is. I just, I can dig into that here in a second. So, that is on the website. The final EIR addendum is currently in progress, so that work started. That amendment was approved by city council in March, I believe, and ESA is currently working on that. We don't have a draft of that addendum yet available for review. We're working on that currently internally. In terms of the maintenance functions, the maintenance functions have not changed. Of the current maintenance facilities that happen at the existing wastewater treatment plant site, those same maintenance functions will happen at the new wastewater treatment plant site. So, the 5,000 square feet and what's, what that's used for will now be, the same functions will be done with 4,000 square feet at the new facility. So, just wanted to clarify that. There was a question about the additional pipeline, the two pipelines, the two smaller pipelines versus the one larger pipeline, and the need for the second larger pipeline is due to the inflow and infiltration that we do see from wet weather and water getting into the collection system that needs to be treated. So, that is the reason for that. To answer another question about the contingency shift, I want to be, I want to be clear right now that no money has shifted from contingency into the water reclamation facility project as of yet. This 1.9 million represents a potential shift, but until the city council takes action, the $67.2 million design-build agreement with Philance Black and Beach doesn't change until a council takes action. So, this is just a proposed change of that 2 million. But that's the only money that we've, we are anticipating moving from contingency at this point in time. And then, the final question was, changes for, change orders, are they for design, are they for construction? And if I'm interpreting this question correctly, these change orders represent a fundamental change in the construct. So, they represent the cost for not only modification of design, but the construction cost associated with those changes as well. So, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then, again, going back to the difference between a conventional project delivery, 100% design, low-bid contractor versus design-build, we're really trying to identify the change orders at a very much earlier stage before we get into construction. I think that was all of them. Rob, did you have any, any others on the website, maybe?
The GSI report dated April 19, 2019, is on the city's website, and we're working to be more consistent in where we put this stuff, because I notice sometimes it ends up on the city's website, and sometimes it ends up on the project website. This was put on the city's website, and it's in the document center, under Public Works, Wastewater Treatment, Water Reclamation Facility Upgrade, and then it has a list of documents there. I will have this also put on the front page of the city's website with a Hot Topic link tomorrow, so that you can find it much easier, rather than digging through the website. The goal is to get everything onto the project website and to have links on the city's website linking you to those, rather than having things in both places.
Thanks, Rob. That would be very helpful. And the Hot Topics helps, but all that is, is a link, so that's good, too. So, okay. All right, so, other comments? Go ahead, Paul.
Getting back to the potential change orders, and something that Barbara mentioned about the increase to the designer. When we, when the city issued its notes to proceed to Black and Beach to start its work, I believe the budget for them was just shy of $5 million. So, is some of this going to an increase in their budget? And then, the rest of it goes to Philonk when they actually go to do the work? Is there, is there a table showing what, who gets what out of these change order amounts?
It goes to the joint venture, so there is no designation between the, either of them. It's a change in the overall cost for the joint venture. There was a breakdown of costs for different components of the facility, as well as a breakdown in the anticipated design cost of that 67 million. That is not part of the contract, that was something that was provided as part of the proposal. So, we're talking about making a change to the design-build. This isn't just for construction or just for design, this is for everything. So, this would be 1.9 of, onto the 27, 67 million. It wouldn't be designated for either entity or for any activity, it's just in total.
Also, because, and this came up when we did the, when Barton Wells did the report last year about the different enterprise funds that pay for this project, some of which is paid out of the water enterprise fund, some of it's paid out of the sewer fund. So, these change orders, are they, do they get that split, or some all attributable to one fund over the other? Or do we, have you tallied those up to see how that gets distributed?
Yeah, that's one of the things that, and we have not done that yet, and that's one of the things that we've been discussing internally, is as the cost of the project change, or they shift from different components to the other, a good example of that is the shift of cost between the recycle water facilities project into the conveyance facilities project, we're going to need to go through and continue to do, I would assume, and I need to talk to Ms. Callaway, and we need to talk to Ms. Callaway about how we want to do this exactly, but maybe on an annual basis, when we're doing the budget, annual budget, we would look at the total project budget and what's allocated for the next fiscal year, what was planned for water and sewer, and do a true-up of that to see, to see where that split is.
But for the public's benefit, I would suggest that the $41 WRF increase was 25 on the sewer, I believe, and 16 on the water. So, even if that were to be reallocated, public should not, that should be transparent to them, that's really more an accounting thing from the background.
It's an internal accounting exercise, yeah.
Yeah, as long as you hold to the 126.
To the top point.
Go ahead. Okay. Just...
Eric, one thing I didn't see in here, and maybe it's in the attachments and the addendums that I didn't get a chance to peruse, admittedly, alternatives to the PCOs and the results of approving, not approving, you know, what would be the negative implications, for example, of not revising the maintenance building? What would the potential negative impacts be? Is that, would that be found all in the attachments?
We did not do a detailed alternatives analysis of every change order. What would, you know, if the city didn't have the space it needed for maintenance, what would need to be done there? We did not go through that analysis.
I'm wondering if it's going to be a prudent... I'm wondering if it's going to be a prudent exercise going forward, if there's a certain dollar amount, if it exceeds a certain dollar amount, to maybe do an alternatives analysis, cost-benefit analysis, to make better decisions on these. I mean, I'm thinking $100,000 sounds about right, but that's just kind of off the cuff. I don't know what the rest of everybody else thinks. But I mean, $748,000, $416 a square foot, that seems out of whack. Maybe, I mean, in construction, that just doesn't seem, it seems like if you're paying $416 a square foot, put your building somewhere else, especially if you have a lot more parcel to work with. So, I mean, I'm not going to second-guess the placement of the maintenance building, but at $416 a square foot for an 1,800 square foot addition, it doesn't pencil out to me logically. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I mean, I'm just thinking a cost-benefit analysis, especially on the maintenance building size increase, would have been a better basis from which to make a decision, so.
And I would agree with that, Eric. Maybe as part of the homework or preparation for council on some of the larger ones, you may want to look at that and have some alternatives analysis. In addition, should these be approved? I noticed on several of them, on the cover sheet, it said basically that they have not evaluated the impact of time. In other words, is this a, quote, "time is of the essence in the contract," and they reserve the right to come back for more? You know? So I think that needs to be very carefully negotiated, if you approve some of these, with all the, you know, overhead in there, that we don't come back, and 90 days later, it's another, you know? That needs to be in the 29%, in my opinion, assuming it starts in a reasonable period of time.
And again, the cost for these PCOs are the maximum price that these PCOs could cost. So the maintenance building is $748,000, that's the maximum it could cost. That is an estimate. It can't cost more than that, but it will only cost what it costs to do that. And so we will be reviewing the, during construction, we will be seeing an open book in terms of everything that's being spent on the construction. And so, like I said, it can't cost more than $748,000, but it could cost $700,000, or whatever that number may be, whatever the actual cost of the construction is at the time.
That's a good point, but still with that time contract statement in there, maybe that needs to be deleted, or we have guaranteed maximum funding in the original now, and we're looking at considerably more, so. Questions, comments, anything else? Okay, so how about any closing comments from the members? Val, do you have anything?
Well, personally, I'm in favor of the proposed change order for the water, for the WRF. And from my perspective, it appears that the design will enhance the project and will meet current industry standard. The changes were made by the design team as a result of several workshops with the city, city and Morro Bay staff, as well as program manager. And where, most of them, as we discussed today, a lot of them, those changes were brought by the city or the project program team to the design team, asking them to address or solve a particular design issue. And it seemed to have a very thorough, built-in check and balance system in regards to, is this cost on you, or is it cost on us? And the design team developed a solution and a cost, and those things were discussed by the program management and the city. And both the city and program management vetted those costs with their own personnel. And it wasn't just, here, I take this cost and I accept it. So it appears to me that those costs were very well-vetted. And I see that the costs are still within the contingency allocated for this project, reducing from 6.24 million to 4.37 million. So I guess it is what it is for this particular phase of the project, and appears to be a necessary exercise.
Thank you.
So as a member of the planning commission, being asked to represent their interest or the interests of the community also, but specifically the planning commission, I asked the question at the Tuesday planning commission meeting, what they would like to have expressed as their concerns moving forward. Some of those I received on the record, some of those I received off the record. A couple, the biggest item was making sure, as it was eloquently put to me, the tail doesn't wag the dog, the engineering costs, the consultant costs don't skyrocket. So in the next couple of meetings, I don't know how we'll actually implement this request, but maybe getting some more precise accounting of how the consultant costs have transpired up to now, just to kind of make sure we're aware of how those costs are being allocated. And specifically, in regards to a traffic management plan, as the conveyance part of this project comes online, sooner than later, you know, we're talking late spring, early summer of '20. And, you know, we're already in the summer of '19 now, so I mean, we don't want our business partners on Quintana waiting to the last minute and wondering and stressing on how that's going to materialize. So if we could maybe give some thought and effort to that in the upcoming months, and maybe get at least preliminary plans, so that we can get comments, public comments on that, maybe in the fall. Anyway, something to think about.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that's it. Jesse, I want to, I'm sorry. I want to thank both Rob and Eric for the presentation and all the material. There is a considerable amount of documentation in the agenda. When do you need any, do you have enough comments back from us to take to council based on what's been stated here? And can our members still submit additional comments if they'd like? Are you taking this to council next Tuesday?
This will go to council on the 14th, yes, so next Tuesday.
Oh, okay, all right. So it's pretty much, you're pretty close to the agenda, I'm sure, now. Okay, well, I agree with my colleagues, and basically, and if you could, if there's any more, a little bit more in the alternatives, obviously, some of these are necessary, and we probably want to accept all the change orders that are decreases, but I suspect many of them are dependent on some of the others that were the increases. So maybe for some alternatives, that would be good. Okay, so I think that's it for everybody. I want to thank the public for coming and your participation as well. We do appreciate your comments. I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.